Good evening and welcome to the June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Yorktown Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Gordon Fine. I chair the board. Joining me tonight on the board is William Gregory, Anthony Tripodi, John Meistrich, and Robert Fahey. Our legal assistant, Ms. Green Currie, our town attorney, Adam Rodriguez. And the first thing we need to do is set up next month's meeting. So next month's meeting will be held here in Town Hall on Thursday, July twenty-seventh at six-thirty. If you have to send your mailings out, they must be sent out between July third and July twelfth. If you send them out before July third or after July twelfth, we will not be able to open your hearing next month. You also need to post your sign on the property showing that there's a zoning board application, pending and return the sign affidavit showing the photo of the sign on the property prior to the hearing next month. To find out who you send your mailings to, you take the zoning board packet that you receive and you go to the tax office here in town. Tell them you're doing a zoning board application. They will show you the names and addresses of those parties. You must notice, you write those names down and the addresses down on the sheet that's in the zoning board packet. Send your mailings out to them within those dates. Must be sent out first-class mail with a mailing receipt. You do not have to send it out certified, just a certificate of mailing. It's a lot cheaper than certified mail. And submit those receipts along with the proof of mailings to the building office prior to next month's meeting. Site visits, if we have to do a site visit on your property, will be held the Saturday before. That's Saturday, July twenty-second. We usually start around eight-thirty a.m. in the southern end of town, work our way north. Looking at the applications, it may only be maybe one site visit. Moving on, I distributed last month's minutes. Any comments or questions? I made the corrections that Bob pointed out. Anybody? I move that we approve last month's minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time you seconded it.
See, I could second.
Today you could.
Because I'm here.
Last month you couldn't.
Last time I wasn't, so.
Okay, moving on to new business. We have Boga. Property of thirty-seven forty-seven Briar Hill Street, application for renewal of a special use permit for accessory apartment. We'll handle that administratively, refer to the building department and public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abrams, property of thirty-four sixty-one Sagamore Avenue. Application for renewal of a special use permit for accessory apartment. We'll handle that administratively, refer to the building department and public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Duainus, property of thirty-eight seventy-three Eleanor Drive. Application to construct a new front portico that requires a front yard setback of thirty-six point four-four feet where forty is required. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening. What's the, just the front portico, that's it?
Yes, there's a front stoop that we're just covering with a portico, so.
Okay. We'll do a site visit on the twenty-second, refer to the building department and then public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Hoffman, property of thirty-eight oh, thirty-eight oh-eight Old Cromtown Road. Application for renewal of a special use permit for accessory apartment. We'll handle that administratively, refer to the building department and public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That thing, say some words.
Moving to the adjourned agenda. Falcone. Application to reconstruct an existing multifamily dwelling that has been approved by a variance dated July twenty-ninth, nineteen-seventy-six for three dwelling units. Where the applicant's requesting four dwelling units. This application will require a front yard variance of twenty-two feet where forty feet is required. Fourteen fifty East Main Street. This was opened last month. Good evening.
Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Want to state your name for the record again?
My name's Richard Falcone.
And what brings us back?
I'd like to withdraw the four, the request for a four apartment. We're gonna leave it as a three, but I have a question. That's why I came in tonight. It's about the front porch on the house. Part of that request was a variance for that. Since we're remodeling the house, I'd like to use that front porch as an enclosed part of the house. Can, do I still need a variance since it's an existing part of the structure? I just needed a clarification.
The portico's being at?
No, no, the front porch.
The front porch was there already.
Yes, so I want to use that.
But you were.
There was a discrepancy in the building department.
Was there a variance in that decision that you provided? Was that part of a variance?
It was a re-
It's just physically there.
So the variance that's listed on the applications, is that what the variance is for?
Well, it was for the four family and it was also for the front porch.
Well, the four family, this was a use variance.
Oh, you're sorry, so the-
Twenty-two or forty is required as an area variance.
Yes.
So that's what that was for?
Yes.
And you just, so you just want to maintain that?
Yes.
So he wants to enclose that, am I understanding?
Right. I want to enclose, I want to make a living space.
Let me finish. Let me finish.
Go ahead.
The foot, the footprint of the front porch that you have on there now is what you want to keep.
Yes.
All you want to do is enclose that front porch.
Yes.
Right, okay.
I want to use it as, as living space.
In my mind, it would, it would still need to be.
Yeah, if you needed, if you needed it for the porch, you'd need it for the enclosed porch.
Well, the porch is there already.
Right, but it's still need a variance for that. You'd need a variance to enclose it too.
You need a variance to enclose it.
Okay, so that, then I-
We're just gonna, we're just gonna leave it open, let's go into the planning board anyway, right?
Okay.
Yeah, you're gonna have-
Well, no, I'm not going, I mean unless I need it for the porch.
You need to go to the planning board to get your site plan approved.
Okay.
The answer is, you still need to go to the planning board. We refer-
But I need a site plan for re, it's a remodel on the house though. It's, it's not a new house.
We refer it to the planning board.
Yeah, architectural plans.
For a report. My sense is, is that they're going to, we ask you to do a site plan.
I don't know that he needs to go to, listen, I can, we can have a meeting offline and figure out mechanically what has to happen and then we can go from there.
But say, no, we send them to the planning board, but what's he doing at the planning board?
I don't know that he needs to be there.
If he's only going for three at this point.
Are you changing anything with parking? You doing anything with the parking lot? Changing anything with that?
Probably.
Same size of the house is gonna be the same thing.
You repaving it, you are you paving?
Well, we're gonna pave it, yeah.
Yeah, well, are you gonna pave any new areas?
No. Whatever the existing paving lines are is what-
Is what you got, right?
Yeah.
We're gonna, if, if you wanna, we're gonna need the variance anyhow. We referred it to the planning board, we referred it to the town engineer. We referred to that.
We're not sure what the planning board's doing with it.
Yeah, what is the planning board supposed to do with it?
Well, what, what we can talk about is basically what it needs to do, but typically this thing was a a referral to the planning board to see if in fact they needed to deal with any issues in terms of parking, in terms of access, ingress and egress, those kind of things. Those things were not dealt with particularly, I don't think, when the-
Well, what we'll do just to keep it neat is we'll refer to the planning board, let them tell, I know, and let them tell us they don't need to do anything.
Okay.
And in a-
You know. Yeah, just to make sure. Since you already referred it last month.
I mean, are you, are you radically, you're not, you're gonna keep, basically keep the building the same as it is, right? I mean, I mean-
Well, yeah, the roof line changes a little bit, but basically it's going in, no, 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 no.
A little bit, but you're not doing anything radical that's gonna, that's gonna look really off of what you have.
It's gonna look better than what's there, I can tell you that.
Got that, I mean, that's a given, so.
So, we have a memo from last time and Steve, the building inspector's interpretation at the time was you do need the variance for the front yard, so
Right, yeah.
there's nothing for us to, I mean unless you're appealing that decision, which is probably not making, wouldn't make too much sense.
No, we're discussing, we're gonna do, we're gonna vote on the variance once he comes back.
Right.
Saying we already referred it to planning, so let them tell us that they need something or they don't need something.
Does the plan that you have that you-
You, is there?
We don't have Wi-Fi.
You don't have a phone.
The plan that you submitted originally with this particular application, that's gonna change now. Because-
Did you do?
Yes, and I'm resubmitting that to the building department.
The original application was for a four-family dwelling.
Yes.
And now it's gonna be a three-family dwelling.
Yes.
Is, are the dimensions of the building gonna change as a result?
No. No, the dimension of the four family to the three family is staying the same. The footprint of the house is staying the same.
Staying the same.
Yes.
What were you, what were you gonna do with the porch originally? Were you, were you just gonna rip it off or you rebuild it?
Well, one part I was either gonna rebuild it or I was just gonna take it away. But I, laying out the, the footprint of the house to make the apartments, ni- nice-sized apartments in there, so they're conducive to living nowadays. I needed that extra five feet is what it is, so.
So whatever you submitted last time, the plan.
Right.
The building inspector interpreted that you needed a variance.
I understand that.
You need a variance to enclose it.
The reason why.
You would need a variance to enclose it, right?
No, it, whatever reason. It doesn't matter what the reason was. That was his interpretation. So you're gonna submit a new plan and he'll make a similar determination.
Isn't it really, should the prosecutor be submitting his new set of plans?
Yeah.
They make a determination and we go from there.
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
To come here and ask a question is, I think you submit the plan.
Okay.
Have you created the plan yet?
Uh, it's very rough, but I can have it finalized before the next meeting.
Generally, what we do is we like to look at the plan before we do the approval on it.
Okay.
So what we'll do is-
I'll get it into the-
We'll send it to planning, see if they want to do anything with it. If they do, fine. If they don't, they'll just send us a note saying we don't need to look at it and submit the plan to us and decide.
Okay. Okay. I'll get those in right away.
Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I move that we adjourn this to next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this is being referred to the planning department?
Yeah, it was already.
Where else, where else is it going? Anywhere else? Just planning, alright.
It, it, we refer, per the minutes, we referred it to the planning board, referred it to BACCA, and we referred it to the town engineer.
Yeah, that was all done last month.
I know.
It was all done last month.
I'm just asking if, if this new, uh-
Doesn't change anything.
If there was anything else, anything else you were adding to it. I don't know if it changed anything, if there's anything else you were adding, okay.
Nothing.
Thank you.
Have a great night, gentlemen.
Thank you. Carvallo, this is property of sixteen eighty-one Summit Street. That's being adjourned at the applicant's request through September. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Grace, property at nine fifty-nine Hanover Street. That's also being adjourned to September at the applicant's request. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And while we're doing those, we'll do O'Donnell also, which is property of fourteen oh-five Tourist Lane. That is also being adjourned to September. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Elazai. Application to legalize three accessory apartments in a single-family home with an existing non-conforming cottage making a total of four dwelling units in a single-family district. And the application to allow two primary structures on a lot where one is permitted and to allow combined floor area of three accessory apartments of eighteen thirty-five square feet where eight hundred feet is permitted and to allow four accessory apartments where one is permitted, and this is all at sixteen fifty-eight Amazon Road.
Good evening, Mr. Buckley.
Good evening, board. I'm John Buckley, the Oxman Law Group, representing Alex Alazai. In preparations for tonight's appearance, I looked at the January twenty-sixth video of the, the board presentation. And board member Gregory made a comment that I think is, really should guide us as we move forward in this. The question should not be so much as whether it should be a three or a four-family use, but whether it qualifies as a multifamily use without getting into the number of, of units. The discussion back in January and previous to that with David Steinmetz in the fall was whether a pre-existing non-conforming use existed. Our difficulty has been, despite diligent efforts, there are no records available from the building department that could confirm whether there was a non-conforming use. The title report shows easements, utility easements dating back to nineteen twenty-eight as Amazon Road was being developed. The title report shows deeds suggesting that there were premises on the, the property dating back to the thirties.
Well, wouldn't the deed just be a deed for the property itself, not how many units are on the property?
I believe it refers to structures in the-
Right, but it says structures, it doesn't specify what the structures are. It could be a house and a garage, it could be anything.
Do we have, do we have that deed?
It's, it's in the title report. We supplied the title report. And you're right. My issue here is, we're attempting to prove a negative. There are no records available from the town of Yorktown, with one exception, which I'll get into, from the building department as to when the property was built. Was it built before the, the establishment of the building code? When did this all take place? The only record that we can find is the tax assessment record, which shows a couple of things. Like, if you don't have a copy, I can provide one. I have. Poor cop. Thank you. If you look at page three of that assessment record, you'll note that the property was originally, it's at the top toward the middle, was originally characterized, categorized as two-ten. It was changed at some point to two-eighty-one, multiple residences on one parcel. Now, does this make the property legal? Obviously not. You can have property assessed that's illegal in nature, but it lends credence to the thought that this was a long existing-
Sorry, we're on page three, you refer.
On the very top. At the very top.
Oh, it's all doing here. So when was, when was, when was that assessment done? What year is that? That they put that note on that, on that form? So what's the earliest information that we have on this form? Is it nineteen sixty-four?
Nineteen sixty-two.
Sixty-two.
Uh, well, the, yeah, sixty-two.
So the earliest, so, so at some point, I mean, this could have been done almost at any time, but in nineteen sixty-two is essentially when they've established this property as having all these, all these-
Well, we don't know when they would-
No, that could have been an existing condition. It's the, the first time that it's noted on the tax assessment record.
Okay, okay.
If you look at the bottom in the comments section, it says apartment rented out and main house cottage rented out. And that's not conclusive. All I'm trying to highlight here is that there's a dearth of proof and we've been placed in the position where we've searched for records, we can't find them. Board member Fahey, at the last meeting, you suggested that we go to the health department, which we did. It came back in the title search that there were no violations of record. We then filed a FOIL request. We, I've been hoping that the FOIL request would be answered by now. They promised by June the eighth. Here we are at June the twenty-second, still nothing.
Unfortunately, as you know, when, when a report comes back, no violations of record, it doesn't mean there aren't any. It just means there were none posted.
Again, I'm trying to prove a negative. I, I agree. You're absolutely right, but I'm trying to prove a negative. What I can say to you is there are no building department records. There were three curb cuts indicating that at some point, you know, the town had to be involved to authorize.
Not necessarily. If the town's involved, it would be a permit from the highway department, you would think.
You would think. Where I can tell you permits were issued, there were five electric meters in two thousand and twenty-one that were approved by the town building department.
That we know.
That suggests that it was a pre-existing condition, the town was aware of it and-
Or that they just requested a permit, five permits, not that it was pre-existing.
But you would think it would trigger the question, you know.
We, at, one of the, at one of the first meetings, we went through that trying to figure out how it was ever, the permits were ever even issued. And there was really no clear answer to that.
Nothing to clarify that.
No. I, I understand. I'm just highlighting that so that you can recognize the difficulties that we're facing. This property owner is interested in bringing up the quality of the property. He's, he's anxious to connect the main structure at least to the sewer line, which is literally at the border of his property. But we need some, some way to reset the discussion with the board so that we can make a more effective use of this property. One of the thoughts I had-
Well, you can use the property for what it's designed to be used for, which is a residence.
Right, but the question is, how many units in the residence?
Whatever's permitted by zoning.
For example, there's a cottage on the site, as, as you gentlemen know. Could it be characterized as a caretaker's apartment? That when you look at the code, it calls for a minimum of two acres. This is on one point three, right, okay? But it's all going toward, how do we make an effective use of this property? And as I said, given the, the dearth of, of documentation, we, we need a little guidance.
What I'm saying, as far as affect, the term effective use of the property, the property has an effective use as per the zoning code. You can use it for what the zoning code says, but our decision here, if we denied the applications, doesn't make the property useless. It has the use it's allowed to have. We're not saying you can't have any residences on it, we're just saying you can't do what you want to do with it. What we had said originally was, by asking for the number of units you want, it's really a use variance, not even, it's not even an area variance, it's a use variance, because you're changing the permitted use of the property.
And that's, that's the crux of the question. If this is a, a non-conforming pre-existing use, we're, we're grandfathered in. And our problem is, we can't establish that authoritatively, but again, we shouldn't be forced to-
But by you not being able to prove that, does that responsibility fall onto town to prove it for you or not prove it for you?
Well, one would think that a town department has an obligation to maintain records.
But it could also imply that the, that the work was done illegally and it's never, it's never had a, uh, it's never been legal. And so for, to assume at this point that because it's been standing there for eighty years, somehow now we should justify it and make it legal, that's not the town's responsibility.
No, it, it's not, but over the course of the eighty years, it's pretty clear that the town has been involved in looking at the property, issuing permits for the property. It begs the question, if this was not a permitted use, why did the town allow these things to happen?
Well, there are people with using property illegally a lot of times that the town doesn't necessarily pick up on. It's not a matter of selective enforcement, not, it's just not seeing it or, you know.
We encountered that a lot here, you know, somebody builds a structure, later on they go to sell it, now they have to legalize it, it's been standing for fifty years, but no one ever picked up on it. Same issue could be going on here. They sold the house, whatever, now, now it comes around where we're looking at, oh, we want to put three families here. Well, there were three families there before, but was it legal? Did they build it legally? I mean, there's a lot of questions there.
Oh, no, I, I, look, I agree.
So, well, do you have any permits? I mean, there, on this accessory card, there's a permit for the carport, utility room, storeroom. I don't know if those were modifications of the principal structure, or those are relevant to those outbuildings.
No, and this again goes to the crux of my issue. There are no permits available for review in the building department. So on the one hand, we have the tax assessor saying, yeah, we did A, B, and C, but when we go to the building department, there's no record of that.
Well, you know, tax assessor's cards don't always jive with the building department has.
And I know.
Well, there are, there are permits with permit numbers at least here, so you know, there, there should be some permit somewhere, but you know, probably not enough to prove the legal non-conforming.
Let me ask you just a, a more of a procedural question. The property is owned by an LLC, isn't it?
Yes.
So Elazai is the name of who?
He's the, the managing member of the-
So wouldn't the application actually have to be in the name of the owner, which is the LLC?
One would think, yes. I'm on the scene late, Mr. Chairman.
I understand, I'm just asking because whatever we decide, it should be in the correct name.
Yes, it should be Black Mountain Capital.
So do you want us to amend it for Black Mountain Capital?
I do. And I would also ask that you reserve decision, at least until we get the, the health department FOIL request answered.
I'd be interested to see that.
So what would you like us-
Give you copies of the communications with the department.
What would you like us to do tonight?
I would like you to reserve decision.
Well, reserve decision or just adjourn it? You know, although you're not asking us to close and reserve, you want to present possibly more evidence.
I do.
So that would just be adjournment then?
Yes.
Before we do that, anybody in the audience have any comments? Okay, then I would move, you want?
Just one quick question.
Yeah.
Um, since, you know, this could be, become a accessory main situation and LLC is the owner of the property, have we ever encountered defining owner occupied with a corporation or an LLC?
This is I think the first time we've come across. We already discussed that part in previous meetings on this one.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure the name was correct on the application.
Right.
Naturally, I would argue that if you're a, a member of the LLC, you qualify as an owner and if you reside on-
I don't think that's really in the spirit of what the law was meant to do when they, when they devised it.
Yes, we know.
You want us to adjourn it for July? You want to put it over to September?
Put it over till September.
Okay.
Let, let me amend that. Let's do it July.
On July?
He's bleeding money, my client, and, and I really want to-
Well, that's why I didn't want to make you come in July if we're not doing anything.
Hopefully.
So we'll do it for July?
If, if, if you decide that you basically need an additional month or two, then just contact us and we'll, we'll put it back.
So I move that we adjourn this application to next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, board. Good evening.
Guzman? There you go. Thank you, sir. Good evening. This is an application for renewal and enlargement of an accessory apartment in a single-family home requiring a special use permit at three ninety-five Halex Mill Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
Your name for the record, please.
Freddie Guzman.
Okay, thank you. So the, the apartment already exists, correct?
Yes.
And how, why are you enlarging it?
Well, because actually my daughter's gonna be married and she really needs to be a little bit like bigger, so that's why we're trying to do the, you know, a little bigger apartment.
So the apartment was always in the basement?
Yes, it is.
So how are you enlarging it in the basement? Are you bringing a piece of it upstairs or are you just keeping it in the basement and adding a room? What are you doing?
It is like in the basement, yeah. We're gonna try and to close the garage and, and I was trying to get another room in there.
Okay. It wasn't up on the screen, there was a plan. This is the, this, the plan.
How old is that house?
How old is the house? I think it's fifty's.
Like, what's that, the fifties or?
You mean the house?
The house, yeah.
Like fifty, like old fifty's.
We didn't go in, we, we, you know, we were on the street when we looked at, I was looking at the house. I'm trying to figure, I know it's an old section of town, I'm just trying to figure how old that house was.
Right. Yeah, I think it's nineteen seventy-three that started like, you know, the way they're building the house, I think. But I live in there like around eighteen, twenty years.
Does the total square footage that's included in this count include the mechanical room?
Uh, no, because they're gonna close like everything, so.
Okay, so I'll make sure we're not using the mechanical room into that calculation.
Yeah.
So you're getting rid of the garage in essence, right?
Yes.
So what do you do about where that parking space used to be?
Uh, I'm gonna close the garage, so.
Right, but you were using the garage for parking or not?
No.
You never parked in the garage? So is there gonna be enough parking?
Nope, not gonna be parking then.
Is there enough parking for the accessory apartment?
Um, in the driveway.
Oh, 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 yeah. It is a lot of parking.
How many cars can you fit in your driveway?
Well, like about like four and four in like each.
I know you had some limos in the driveway.
Yeah, sometimes, yes.
So the garage is already on the same floor as the basement?
Yes, yes.
It's like my house.
Have you driven some Halex Mill?
I've been by probably about ten minutes.
It's right next to the new one that they're building there.
Okay.
We have a memo from the building department dated June twenty-first. No violations, no objections. Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? Anybody in the board have a comment on the application? Okay. Based upon the testimony given, I would move that we grant the application for renewal, enlargement, accessory apartment in a single-family home that requires a special permit for a period of three years and grant the variance. The variance obviously doesn't get it three years, it's just granted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you. Hi.
Newman? Application for renewal of special use permit for accessory apartment at three eighty-eight London Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
Your name, sir?
Uh, my name's Gerard Squire. My daughter's, my daughter's house.
Okay. And she is authorized you to appear for her tonight?
Yes.
Memo from the building department dated June twenty-first, no violations, no objections. This is just a renewal, correct?
Yes.
Okay. No changes, correct, to the apartment? Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? Okay, I move that we grant the application, renewal of special use permit for accessory apartment at three eighty-eight London Road for a period of three years. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Henson. Application for a two-story addition that will require a variance for a rear yard setback of twelve point eight-one feet where thirty is required and a non-conforming lot of eighty-eight, six-four square feet where twenty thousand is required at twenty-seven eighty-one Hyatt Street. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You, you could all have a seat if you wanted. You could all speak if you want, but let's have one person up at a time.
I thought you were going to bring the little guy up.
I am, I am, no.
Could you give us your name for the record, please?
I'm Gerald Moore. Um, I'm representing Althea Henson and Third Floor Corporation for the addition, twenty-seven eighty-one Hyatt Street.
Okay, you want to run us through what the addition is going to be and where it's going to be?
Pretty much, we want to expand the kitchen, um, and expand the, um, house over the garage to, uh, which would add two bedrooms and one bathroom. And make the kitchen bigger, um, more modern, standard.
So this is a two-story addition?
This is, uh-
First floor and above.
Yeah, but the garage is existing already.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a variance previously for the carport.
Yeah, correct.
Now the addition, it's not going over the carport, is it?
The addition is not going over the carport.
It's just following the building line.
It's going over the garage, the existing garage, but, yeah, the carport would, is next to that, yeah.
The reason I ask is there was a letter here from a neighbor, which is in the file, be part of the record, just questioning whether or not the addition was going to be going, extending into the carport, because back when that variance was granted, I forget what year it was.
Yeah.
I think it was two thousand.
Yeah.
Uh, there was concern about how close to the property line it was, they were concerned that the addition now wasn't going to be as close.
Yeah, no, it's not going over the carport, just the garage.
You guys are, you, you guys are on sewer, you, you're on sewer over there or septic?
Sewer.
Sewer, sewer, right?
Yeah, sewer, sewer. We have a memo from the Building Department dated June twenty-first. No violations and no objections. Okay, is there anything else you wanted to add? Do you want to ask if anybody has any comments?
Don't believe so.
The plan submitted, no changes to it?
Uh, nope, yeah, just the plans that we submitted, which is pretty much what, uh, the plan is.
So I was looking in the plans and I can't find it, so it already is a two-story house, but there's like a hill and everything back there.
Yeah.
So would you see the new addition from the front of the house? Is it going to be like above, or is it the same grade as, as there?
That's the front.
Um-
It's not going to exceed the existing roof line.
Yeah, if you look at the elevation-
I'm looking at this picture, would I see like a new roof or anything behind there?
Um, I don't believe so, you know, maybe a little bit, but-
The grades, like on the sto, the floor grades are the same, you're not like making steps up or?
No, yeah, the, it, it would step up probably, once you get to the garage, there would be a little step up, but nothing, nothing significant.
The addition is like the same levels as the house itself.
Pretty much, yeah.
Anybody in the audience, sir, do you want to say something? Come on up. Just give us your name when you step up.
This is Lauren Frank Petty, we're next door, and we already feel bad because-
Was, excuse me, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
We have sort of the, our biggest concern.
What's the last name?
Our biggest concern.
What is the last name?
Um, Petty, and we're-
Are you the party that I was talking about whose letter was sent in?
Yes, yes, we are. And this is a picture of our house and their house, and the only concern we had was that the building was going to come into the carport.
Correct.
Because back in two thousand, we actually came before the zoning board when that variance went into effect, and the understanding was that that was always going to be an open structure with no walls, and that was really the only way that-
He just said it, it's going to remain.
But it is, so we're great, we're great, we're happy. That's, from the beginning, we thought it was-
That was the only issue that we had.
Yep.
We're happy.
They're good neighbors and-
Your expansion, and we hope you're going to be our neighbors for the next fifteen, twenty years, for as how, however long I live.
Yep. No, it's, it's, that's it.
Okay.
That was our, that was our whole thing.
Can't get better than that.
Could we quote you on the next application?
I'm sorry? I didn't hear you.
You could testify at all, all our applications.
No, no, that's great. That was the only concern. There was some, we weren't clear on whether the building was going to come all the way over.
I got that from reading your letter.
But-
We appreciate that you're not building over the carport.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments?
That's it, we're going, that's great.
Okay.
I'm happy, I'm happy.
Given what we've heard tonight, I move that we grant the application for a two-story addition that will require variances for a rear yard setback of twelve point eight one square feet where thirty's required, and a non-conforming lot of eight hundred, eight thousand eight hundred sixty-four square feet where twenty thousand's required with, at twenty-seven eighty-one Hyatt Street, with the usual stipulation that this pertains to the requested variance only, not the remainder of the property line, and that the addition be built in substantial conformity with the plan submitted. Do I have a second?
For a period of three years.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. You're very welcome. Alexandre. Application to allow a chicken coop in the front yard, which was determined by previous variance, that will require a variance of thirty square feet where forty's required, and a lot size of twenty thousand two twenty-six square feet where forty thousand's required at twenty-one oh seven Lavoy Court. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you give us your name for the record, please?
Noelia Nuno Alexandra.
Your name, sir?
Nuno Alexander.
Okay. All right, so you want to do a chicken coop?
Yes.
And I understand the coop is going to be located by two oh two on that side of the property.
Correct.
As you're facing two oh two, to the right of the shed?
Yes.
Between the shed and the garden?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. See if they have the memos in here. Steve, was there a memo on this? I'll keep digging. Coming up, up, there it is. Memo dated June twenty-first. No objections, but did find a porch over the front door that is in need of repairs and require a building permit. Did he speak to you about that?
Porch?
Porch over the front door. Steve, do you want to come up and explain that?
When I went to your property the other day, I, I know the porch was rebuilt, where it's all, there's some electrical work, it's very shabby underneath there. Plus there's posts, they're not even attached to the ground or anything, they're, and they're rotten. It needs immediate care, and you need a building permit for it to be there.
We needed some-
That, that was there when I bought the house already.
Look, regardless, regardless of what-
Yeah, it doesn't matter if you bought it that way, if it needs a permit, it needs a permit.
Yeah, you're going to need a permit for that. But that shouldn't interfere with this?
No. I'm just letting you know that it's, that it's there.
I've been busy, I'm a carpenter, but I'll-
We'll take care of that, yeah.
Two, two things I would point out, though, is when you request a permit for a chicken coop, you have to supply the Board with a, a, basically a, a plan of what the chicken coop's going to look like, the actual plan of the coop, not just a drawing on the survey, as well as a plan for the storage of the waste and for the storage of the food.
Okay.
So I don't currently see that in the file.
We were not informed of that requirement, yes.
We need to submit those, we can consider everything in determining the application.
I can, I can answer those questions.
It's got to be in a written, written form in the file.
So it's a matter of record.
Right. So what we're going to need to do, unless you want to add something else, is we're going to need to adjourn it to next month, you could supply that information to the file. Because we need to have it in the files, so if it is granted, the Building Department has something to look back on to see what the plans were supposed to be. To make sure you're maintaining the coop the way it's supposed to be, the food the way it's supposed to be, and the waste the way it's supposed to be stored.
Okay.
The waste is going to be used as fertilizer.
I know, but you can't just take it from here and throw it to there, it's got to be stored somewhere.
Yeah.
What you may want to do-
Is there screening requirements also?
Only we think it needs a requirement screening.
Oh, but he's just mentioning that.
Small size of the lot and the fact that you're on a public highway.
But that's not a requirement, it's what does determine what it is.
Yeah. Yeah, we would have been sending those before if, you know, if we have the information.
What we do is, there's nobody in the audience other than to ask if anybody has any comments, unless Steve wants to say something else.
This guy in the front row, this guy in the front row.
Well, you know, we might also consider screening, it's not always required, but since you're fronting Route two oh two, as part of what you submit to us, it's probably a good idea to show how that could be, you know, viewed or screened from, from Route two oh two.
So there may be a concern that chickens do have a habit sometimes of getting loose, and we don't want them running right onto two oh two, so what are you going to do to prevent that?
I was going to put, um, a link fence on, on the front.
So that's what, like, if you submit, you know, what, you know, the screening, the waste management plan, the food management, the fences, all of that we consider in the application.
Those things are indicated on the, on the sheet that I gave you.
I don't have, these are the final requirements, because then I just want to come next time, and they're like, oh, then we need something else, and-
Well, we can't swear that we wouldn't ask for something else, you know.
It's pretty clear what they're telling you to do right now. If you don't understand it, I'm sure there's a written instruction that you're going to follow.
No, no, I do understand it, I just, I wasn't given this information at, at the beginning.
And if, and if you don't comply, and it raises another question, then you may have to come back again. So my, my advice would be endeavor to answer all the questions that we're asking now, and we'll see where we go.
If you have a question, go ahead and ask the Building Department.
Okay.
It, it's like any other variance, you ha, have to submit a building plan, something for us in writing to say we approve that, not just a general idea that, yes, you can have chicken coop, because then we don't really know what we just approved, and it may not be, it may not be good, and the neighbors come in, or some problem occurs, and we have nothing.
What you need to know is, you also are not allowed to have any roosters.
Now that we, now we knew from the beginning, there's no rooster allowed, yeah.
So I'm going to move that we adjourn this to next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe that wraps up all we have, so I move that we adjourn to next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening and happy zoning.
Do chickens lay eggs without roosters?